Being six o'clock. It being six o'clock, I will call to order the Port Orchard Planning Commission meeting of August seventh, second. Just for everyone's information, Annette is unable to join us this evening, so I will be chairing the meeting as your vice chair. We will, if you would please, rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is states. One nation.
God.
Invisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. With that, I welcome everyone to this evening's meeting. And for the benefit of our viewing audience, whether now or in the future, I will introduce our, the members in attendance this evening. I will do so looking at my screen because all of the screens are a little different. The first person I see is Jim Fisk. Jim, raise your hand. He is a long-term planner with the city of Port Orchard. The next person I see is Joe Morrison, and Joe Morrison is a planning commission member. Tyler McCloskey is also a planning commission member. I see Nick Bond, who is our community, the city's community development director. I see Josie Ratamaker, who is an assistant planner with the city of Port Orchard. Next is Phil King, and Phil King is a planning commission member. Stephanie Bailey is a planning commission member. And Dave Bernstein is a planning commission member. With that, I welcome all of you to this evening's meeting. We do have a couple of public hearings, so it's nice to have most all of our group here in attendance. I will open the floor now to any public comment. There is no one in the council chambers to provide public comment. I do not know if we have anyone in our audience.
We have two members in the audience.
Okay, if there's anyone in the audience who would like to give public testimony to any item other than our public hearing, because we do take our public hearing comments during the public hearing so that they are, those testimonies part of the public record. So is there anyone, if you would like to give public comment this evening, please raise your hand, and Josie will let you into the meeting.
Okay, we have Josh Gish. John Gish, sorry.
Okay. I am looking for John. There he is. John, if you would like to speak, you have three minutes. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I bought a property a few years ago on, up on Morton. And back in the 50s or 60s at some point, they turned it into a duplex. I came along, it had been actually slated to be destroyed, and I bought the thing as a duplex. But talked to the city about building a parking lot, so we had adequate parking. It's on the end of Morton, 1013. And
Excuse me, just a, just a moment. Mr. Gish, are you talking about the ADU ordinance?
Yes.
Okay, that will be part of one of our public hearings. And rather than going through this twice in order for us to include that in the public hearing as official record, that's when you should be giving your testimony. Okay?
Okay, so that'll be later in the meeting today?
In just a couple of minutes.
Okay, no problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else, Josie, in the audience that wanted to give testimony to?
No, not, I don't see anybody else's hand raised.
Okay, thank you. With that, I will close the public comment section for our regular meeting and move on down to approval of our minutes from our July 5th meeting. I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes from July 5th. Taylor, I would be glad to entertain a motion, too.
I motion to approve the minutes from the July 5th meeting.
Thank you. Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second.
Thank you, Joe. The minutes from the July 5th meeting have been presented to us in motion form for approval. Is there anyone who would be choosing to vote against that motion? I will ask a second time, is there anyone who would be voting against the motion to approve the July 5th minutes? Hearing none, the minutes stand approved as presented with unanimous consent. So now we will go on down to our public, our first public hearing, which is on Port Orchard Municipal Code 20.68 and 20.38.235. And Mr. Fisk or Mr. Bond, are one of you leading that presentation? Thank you.
Good evening. Jim Fisk, senior planner, city of Port Orchard. Sorry, my Zoom is, coming up on my screen is muted. Staff introduced proposed revisions to POMC 20.68 and 20.38.235 associated with accessory dwelling units at the March Planning Commission meeting. DCD provided the draft regulations to the Department of Commerce. The city of Port Orchard, CPO responsible official issued a determination of non-significance. And staff advertised for a public hearing in July, consistent with procedures outlined in the Port Orchard Municipal Code. However, as you may recall, we discovered at the opening of the hearing that the Zoom link provided in the notice did not operate correctly. Since then, staff provided a revised notice appearing for tonight's public hearing. Department of Community Development did not receive any comments regarding the proposed amendments associated as advertised. The amendment intends to remove any owner occupancy requirements associated with accessory dwelling units, consistence, consistent with the guidance outlined in House Bill 1220. The city determined that an owner occupancy requirement for ADUs creates a potential barrier to ADU construction. The proposed revisions repeal language referring to owner occupancy from 20.68 and deletes an exception to an owner occupancy requirement for ADUs in 20.38.235, the McCormick Village Overlay District. It is important to note that while drafting the overlay district regulations, the city recognized that an owner occupancy requirement may prevent the creation of ADUs and intentionally created a specific exception to that requirement. The proposed revisions tonight apply the same reasoning, and if adopted, would apply citywide. Additionally, while no action was taken at July's meeting, the planning commission discussed the provision in POMC 20.68.070, which requires an agreement to be recorded with the Kitsap County Auditor. The version before the planning commission tonight reflects that discussion by removing POMC 20.68.0701C, as any agreement recorded with the auditor would be unnecessary if the owner occupancy requirement is removed elsewhere in the POMC. Tonight, we asked the planning commission to take public testimony and consider the draft redline version, which staff provided in the commission's packet, and provide a recommendation to the city council. Staff is available for any questions regarding the proposed amendments.
Thank you. With that, I will open the public hearing for public comment. Now would be the appropriate time, Mr. Gish, for you to raise your hand again, and we will let you back in the meeting for your testimony.
Can you hear me all right?
I can. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. I bought the property at 1013 Morton as an existing duplex. When I applied for building permits, it took a little longer and, but I told me, they told me I needed parking. So I spent about $10,000 building a parking area for it. Then they told me before I got the permit that I needed an A, it had to be an ADU because you guys had just passed an ordinance saying you couldn't have over/under duplexes. And my reason for bringing this up is my intent for the property is to belong to our estate for my children and future family members to manage using the proceeds from the rentals for college for grandchildren. According to what we have now with the ADU, that wouldn't work. My kids aren't going to live there. And they're all over the country. And I've got, I supplied letters to staff stating that this was a duplex back as far as the 60s. But that hasn't been addressed. I had applied for a permit, for variance, and that wasn't addressed because this was coming up. So that being said, if we pass this, if you pass this and eliminate the owner occupancy, that takes care of all of the challenges I had. And we can, we can go forward with using this for my family going forward.
Thank you. We appreciate your comments this evening. Is there any, there is no one in the council chambers, there is no public present. Is there anyone else in the Zoom audience who would like to give testimony to this public hearing? Josie, are you seeing anyone?
No, I'm not seeing anybody with their hand raised.
Okay, I will ask just a second time to make sure that there is no one else in the Zoom audience who would like to give public testimony. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and open the discussion now to a business item to take action on the ADU issue. Is there anyone who would like to make a motion? Thank you, Tyler.
I move to recommend that the city council approve an ordinance amending in Port Orchard Municipal Code 20.68 and Port Orchard Municipal Code 20.38.235 as presented.
Thank you. Is there anyone who would like to second that motion? Thank you, Joe.
Yep, I'll second the motion. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So we have a motion and a second to approve the sections on the ADU as presented. Tyler, as the maker of the motion, do you want to make any comments?
Not at this time.
Okay, Joe, is this second, would you like to make any comments?
No, I, I think this increases flexibility for use, and I think that's a good thing for our housing star.
Okay, I will open it up before, as since I'm chairing this evening, I will save my comments until the other planning commissioners have had an opportunity to speak. Phil or Dave or Stephanie, do you have any input on this issue?
Not at this time.
Okay, hearing none.
Beck, if I may?
Please.
I just have some thoughts on it. I, to be honest, I'm actually opposed to it because I fear, I fear, for lack of a better term, I don't want Port Orchard to begin to look like a shanty town. At least when its owner, when the owner has to be present on the property, there is more pride taken in the appearance of the property. And that is my concern. If we remove that owner occupancy requirement, it just ends up becoming investments for the sake of profit, if you will, at the community's expense. And there seems to be quite the trend these days with investment groups coming in and doing just such a thing. So I'm uncomfortable with removing the owner occupancy requirement.
Thank you, Stephanie. I appreciate those comments.
Yes.
Is there anyone else who would like to make comment? If not, I'm going to add my comments. And although they don't echo Stephanie's completely, it is a little reflection on what she just said. I would ask the planning commission members to look at its section under general requirements, 20.68.100, general requirements, going down to number seven. And that reflects short-term rentals. And it says, "The use of an ADU as a short-term rental shall be allowed, subject to compliance with the vacation rental and bed and breakfast regulations in the municipal code 20.39.345." If you look at 20.39.345, it simply says that ADUs are a level-one overnight lodging, meaning that they can be used short-term daily rentals. And I find that problematic for our neighborhoods. I see an ADU as something that is more to meet the needs of affordable housing. I see people who are staying in our ADUs, and this code limits it to four persons per ADU. I see that more as something that is more of a longer-term commitment, at least a month commitment, perhaps a weekly commitment. But I see it as more of a long-term commitment so that the neighborhoods kind of know who belongs in their neighborhood and who does not. If we make these short-term rentals, and there's, right now, I don't see a process or any restrictions or provisions in place defining what these look like. I personally would not want my neighbor renting an ADU or their basement, whatever, on a nightly basis and having a lot of different people in my neighborhood. I personally would like to, and I understand, and we will ask Mr. Fisk or Mr. Bond to address this, but I understand that this is being looked at by the city. And I personally would like to see that particular section removed until the city has made the provisions for the short-term use of ADUs better defined and clearer to us. So I open that up for discussion.
So the issue before the commission tonight is owner occupancy, not the short-term rental. The city is not currently in the business of regulating those short-term rentals, being 30 days or less. However, the Economic Development Subcommittee has brought this up, and they would like staff to come, come up with a permitting or licensing procedure for these. Even when and if we adopt those, the owner occupancy component really doesn't matter at that point because even an owner could still rent that out short-term unless somehow it is strictly prohibited. So as we go through that process, that's certainly a discussion we could have. I'm not certain that that's what the end result would be, though.
Right, and my, my response to that, my, should I say, my knee-jerk reaction to that is more in line with what Stephanie said, is if you have an owner on the property and they are using their ADU for short-term rental, we have someone there who has a vested interest in monitoring the activity of the short-term rental. When we remove the owner occupancy requirement, I do, I believe we've lost the inability to monitor that activity appropriately. Again, I'm looking for other planning commission members. If you have any input.
Dave Bernstein here, and I agree that both of those are significant concerns, and I have recalled us in prior meetings having the explanation that the original owner occupancy requirement was for keeping the properties in better, better order and not allowing it to become essentially like a slum, slumlord situation. So I guess my question is, if it was to be allowed, that they did not have to have owner occupancy, are there statutes there to protect properties from becoming rundown? And if there are, it kind of begs the next question, is why do we have so many properties out there right now that do not look very good? And how do we enforce them to keep their properties in reasonably good order?
I'm going to, I understand what, did either one of you, Nick or Jim, want to respond to Ms. Commissioner Bernstein?
Well, I, I guess there are property maintenance code requirements that apply to all residents of the city. And we are a big city, and we have one code enforcement officer. And so that, that is really a, I guess, an allocation of resources issue that is governed by the city council and budgetary constraints. And right now, the mayor is putting forward a proposal to bring on a second code enforcement officer so that we can address more of those things. But I would, you know, I think that how much or how little we enforce our codes for things like maintaining landscaping or nuisance conditions is really a product of, of staff resources for, for pursuing those sorts of issues.
Thank you.
So then at this given time, we don't have adequate resources to enforce coding so that if we had a property that was owned by somebody on the East Coast, and they're just reaping the profits from the property, we, that we don't have a mechanism in place to say, hey, you haven't painted the place in 10 years, or you got people who are leaving trash in the yard, or they parked their, left an abandoned car in, in the driveway. How do we fix that? How do we prevent that from happening?
Can I respond? Just, I just want to interject here, and I, I'm not going to apologize for talking. Dave, we have that, and Stephanie, we have that right now, even if the rental is not an ADU. Okay, the owner occupancy requirement for an ADU does not change the issues you're talking about with our current rentals. And we do not know which properties, which single-family residents in our city are owner-occupied or rentals. Is that correct, Nick?
That is correct.
Right, so I don't know that the ADU being owner-occupied or non-owner-occupied is going to address the particular concerns that Stephanie brought up. I also would like to throw my neighbors under the bus and address Mr. Gish's issue in that the property directly to my left is south at my home is a single-family residence. It is on the tax rolls as a singly, single-family residence. Since I have lived in my home now for over 30 years, the property directly to my south has always been rented as, either as a duplex or a triplex. There has never been less than two or three apartments rented in that home. However, it is listed on the tax rolls as a, a single-family residence. That property sold, I'm going to say, four or five years ago. The new owners did a great deal of remodeling, and it's now rented as a duplex. It's in the same neighborhood, I believe, that Mr. Gish is talking about. I do not think that those people need to be penalized for, of their investment because now the city would require, or potentially, if we don't pass this, they would be required for one of those apartments to be owner-occupied. And I, I don't know how we handle that on a citywide basis because I think there are probably many properties in our town as my neighbor's property is and as Mr. Gish's property is. These are people who are trying to make an investment in our town. They're buying properties that have been functioning as duplexes for many years. And if we take away the ability for them to be non-owner-occupied or keeping them as owner-occupied, that is to the detriment of some of our current situations. So those are my comments, and I would open it up to anyone else again before we vote.
Yes, Beck, this is Stephanie. I, I would think that current rentals, such as you described, your neighbors, they would be grandfathered in. I would make the assumption of. But to my way of thinking, we're not so much discussing a single-family residence rental. We're discussing the addition of a second home on the property to be used as a rental in the form of an ADU. So I'm not concerned about our neighborhoods as they are now. My concern is that our neighborhood, as it is now, suddenly every backyard has got a rental in it. And if there is no owner on site to make sure that the property is maintained, then it, as I fear we'll just start to bring the community down. So.
I'm going to interject again, and I'm going to ask Nick, how many applications in the last five or six years have we had for ADUs?
Well, we, we've only had a handful. It's probably three, maybe four, and I think two of them might not have gotten permitted or built. So it's, it's not many. But what I was going to point out, too, is that the zones where we allow single-family houses in ADUs, also, other than R1, allow duplexes. So everything in the old part of town is either R2 or R3. And there is no owner occupancy requirement for a duplex, but there is one for an ADU. And so in a lot of these cases where we use, you know, grandfathering is not the correct word under Washington law, it's a non-conforming use. And so when we have situations where houses go unoccupied for a period of time, or they stop using the duplex, they lose their, their right to maintain the, the two separate units. And so in a lot of cases, we have, we have unpermitted ADUs that exist in the city. And we also have previously, previously legal duplexes and triplexes that have lost their standing as non-conforming uses. And then when somebody updates a building, they have to bring things up to code. So you know, it's not always possible to maintain those existing duplexes. And removing the owner occupancy requirement would make a house with an ADU comparable to a duplex in terms of the, the requirements for owner occupancy.
Joe?
I'm sorry, Nick, did you say that you've had five or less ADU applications in the last few years?
Yeah, I, I can think of three.
That's fine. Yeah, I, I, I mean, I, I think that a variety of housing solutions are needed to solve what is essentially a housing crisis. I don't think there's going to be an avalanche of ADUs. By removing the owner occupancy requirement, perhaps some investor landlords will be motivated to increase housing capacity. We need a lot of solutions, and ADUs are just drop in the bucket, as evidenced by five applications in the last few years. So I, and I, I care and love and deeply care about Port Orchard. I share Commissioner Bernstein and Commissioner Bailey's statements about making sure that our town is beautiful, and I think we all know our town can be more beautiful. Let's work on that, but I would urge us to approve this and so that in some small way, and it is going to be very small, we can add a little capacity. But it won't, we, we will need far more greater, better solutions with more aggressive housing solutions to put people into homes that they can afford beyond ADUs.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would care to comment? Hearing none, I do appreciate everyone's conversation this evening. So we have a motion on the floor to I'm sure I know what the motion is. The motion on the floor is to recommend the city council approve the in ordinance amending POMC 20.68 and POMC 20.38.235 as presented. Now, I'm in the habit of doing unanimous consent, but I want any planning commissioner who wants to vote against this to feel free to say so. So we have a motion and a second. Is there anyone who would be voting against this motion?
Beck, I would be voting against it.
Fine, thank you. With that, we will do a roll call vote. And again, the motion on the floor is to
And again, the motion on the floor is to approve the resolution that the council recommend that our commission recommended the city council approval of these two ordinances as presented. Tyler, how do you vote?
I vote for it.
And Phil King, how do you vote?
I vote for it.
And Joe Morrison, how do you vote?
For it, please.
And Stephanie Bailey, how do you vote?
Against.
And Dave Bernstein, how do you vote?
Hey, I go for it.
He votes for it and I vote for it also. So the motion passes with a count of five to one. Thank you. We will move now to our second public hearing, which is regarding the setbacks on our ADUs. And again, Mr. Fisk, I will turn to you for a summary.
Thank you. Good evening, Jim Fisk, Senior Planner, City of Port Orchard. Staff introduced the proposed revisions to POMC 20.33 and 20.34 associated with accessory structure setbacks at the July Planning Commission meeting. Since then, DCD provided the draft regulations to the Department of Commerce. City of Port Orchard responsible official issued a determination of non significance and staff advertised for tonight's public hearing consistent with the procedures outlined in the Port Orchard Municipal Code. Department of Community Development did not receive any comments regarding proposed amendments associated as advertised. The amendment is intended to create consistency between 20.32 building types and 20.33. It's a green bill, Green Belt District to identify that in 20.33 accessory structures are a permitted building type. Currently, in 20.32 accessory structures are indicated as permitted in Green Belt, but the Green Belt Zone does not call them out specifically. Additionally, the amendment seeks to create consistent accessory structure setbacks in all residential districts in 20.34. Current currently only the R1, R2, R3 and R6 districts identify accessory structure setbacks. These districts allow detached houses, whereas R4 and R5 districts do not allow detached houses. However, the R4 and R5 districts allow other residential structures and accessory structures. The R4 and R5 districts do not currently identify accessory structure setbacks. The proposed amendment creates consistent accessory structure setbacks through all residential zones. Tonight, we asked the planning commission to take public testimony and consider the draft red line version which staff provided in the commission's packet and provide a recommendation to the city council. Staff is available to answer any questions.
Thank you. With that, I will open the public hearing for the ADU setback regulations. Is there anyone in the audience who is here to give testimony for this public hearing?
I'll give people a second to raise their hand if they would like, but at the moment, I'm not seeing any hands raised.
Okay, it would be appropriate to raise you use the raise your hand feature in Zoom if you would like to give public testimony. Again, I will say that there is no one in attendance at council chambers.
Nobody has their hand raised.
No one has their hand raised, so I believe they've had ample opportunity to do so. With that, I will close the public hearing and open it up to council for what your pleasure is with this matter. Did I say council instead of commission? Probably. Is there a motion? Tyler, is there a motion for this?
I move to recommend that the city council approve an ordinance amending accessory structured setbacks in Port Orchard Municipal Code 20 dot 33 dot 010 and 20 dot 34 dot 010 through 20 dot 34 dot 060 as presented.
Is there a second to the motion?
A second.
Thank you. As the maker of the motion, Tyler, did you have any comments you wanted to make?
Just that I think that this will help with the housing situation.
Thank you. As the second, that was Mr. King, wasn't it? Do you have any comments you'd like to make?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. Is it so now I open it up to the rest of the planning commission for comments on the ADU setback.
I have a general question for staff. Is there any negative to this? Any potential negative to this?
I couldn't foresee any negative impact for accessory structure setbacks being reduced this way. But I also don't have a crystal ball. But I think it allows some flexibility in the citing of those accessory structure setbacks and and the citing of the structures themselves. It also makes certain things easier as as far as our public work standards and in providing some different options.
And I would add that I think at least part of the amendment here, you know, certain buildings, if you're under 200 square feet, you don't have to get a building permit for like a shed, but you still have to meet building code separation requirements. And so one of the things that frequently comes up is we have somebody, someone will put up a shed. The neighbor calls and says, hey, can they have a shed there? And our accessory setbacks are not clearly defined. And so this helps clarify what the requirements are. And it does still, it defers to the building code on certain issues. And if something is a problem in the in terms of fire code, we rely on the fire code in those instances.
Is that fine with you? Is there any other comments? I would interject, going back to our last conversation in that Nick indicated we've only had three to five ADU applications in the last few years. So this is just another tool that may make placing an ADU a little more attractive for some people. However, I also don't think that it is going to create a land rush of ADUs happening. So Joe, do you have anything to say?
No, I don't. It's a little hard for me to visualize the zero foot issue, but my understanding is that it's kind of prevents ADUs. I mean, I'll let I'll let either Jim or Nick or anybody correct me. It's just kind of difficult because if you end up too close to a street, then you can't create the ADU. Then so you're kind of locked out of it. So might be helpful. Does that sound about right?
Yeah.
Well, I think that, you know, the the street side setback is is 40 feet for accessory structures. And the intent there is to really locate these accessory structures in the rear yard of a detached house or whatever it is. And it doesn't only just apply to ADUs, although, you know, certainly they could take advantage of that. And as Nick said, and as the code reflects, you know, there are some fire separation requirements. But if you think about zero lot line and if you had an alley for a a detached garage, which would be an accessory structure, pardon me, on a very narrow lot, you know, two piece simple lots that are 30 feet wide, driveways from the primary street being the front. The separation of those is sometimes difficult. Our residential design standards also require if you have access from an alley that the parking come from the alley. So if you wanted a structure back there and you accounted for the current setbacks of five feet on each side, those detached garages would would be 10 feet apart and occupy essentially the width of that 30 foot lot by reducing that side yard setback to zero where they could share that that wall on a common property line. They're taking advantage of of space that would otherwise be wasted. So there are a variety of scenarios, but. Yeah, I I don't see any land rush occurring because of this.
And I would echo what Commissioner Bernstein said is I don't see harm to any of our residents bypassing this. So we have a motion. Is there any further discussion? We have a motion and a second on the floor to recommend that the city council to approve an ordinance amending the accessory dwelling structure set or accessory structure setbacks in Port Orchard Municipal Code 20 dot 33 dot 010 and 20 dot 34 dot 010 through 20 dot 34 oh six so as presented. Is there anyone who would be voting against this motion? I will ask a second time. Is there anyone who would be voting against this motion? Hearing none, the motion passes with unanimous consent. And now we will move down to our last agenda item, which I believe, is it Nick or is it Jim? Who's going to take this one?
I hope it's Jim.
Okay. We're not going to put you on the stock spot, Nick. Okay, Jim, go ahead.
Okay, so as the planning commission is probably aware, we've kicked off our housing action plan. Last week, Makers Architecture, that is the consultant that the city selected to create the housing action plan, made a presentation to the city council kind of outlining steps that will occur as part of the housing action plan. Staff took the consultant on a tour citywide and we saw a variety of housing throughout the city, multifamily detached houses, et cetera. The consultant has actually started interviewing certain stakeholders. I think they interviewed two two people last week. Council member and a local developer. What we've provided in your planning commission packet is the public engagement plan. That, you know, we want to gather the community's input as we go through this. So as I said before, already started with some in person interviews and they will continue those the stakeholder interviews via remote technology by phone and some in person. They're they're seeking input, comments and feedback on what can be done to help improve the housing stock in Port Orchard and the variety of those. So they're seeking input from residents, renters, developers, public officials. They also plan to put out a community survey to identify demand for certain housing types or all housing types. And, you know, to really find out, are the are the people in Port Orchard looking for this middle missing housing option or are they looking for other options? And I may have gotten ahead of myself, but the middle missing is is really a certain type of housing. That's not a detached house. And it's not, you know, a multifamily apartment, garden style apartment, which we have a lot of both of those housing types in Port Orchard. But that that portion in the middle, townhomes duplexes, fourplexes, those types of an ADUs, those type of housing varieties, we don't have a lot of in Port Orchard. So they want to get this survey out and find out what what Port Orchard residents are really after and get their feedback. So they'll have some check in meetings with the planning commission and the city council. That's phase three of of the housing action plan development. And they'll present the existing conditions, the housing stock that we have now and present a housing needs analysis. They're going to be asking some key questions, which include identifying the most pressing housing need in Port Orchard for each segment of the population. What is the community most hopeful and concerned about regarding residential development in Port Orchard over the next decade? How do we modify or update the code to meet housing needs of all economic segments in Port Orchard? They will identify barriers, both longstanding and new barriers to affordable and diverse housing options in Port Orchard. And what newer updated policies, tools, staff capacity and funding are necessary to meet the community's housing goals? So the city, we will host a webpage supporting the housing action plan beginning tomorrow. Wanted to get this in front of you guys before we have that go live, but that will be live tomorrow. And we will make draft and final documents resulting from the housing action plan available there and you can download them. And so you look through your 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 packet there, it outlines that engagement plan. And I've just briefly summarized it, but we're open to hearing any suggestions you might have on expanding the engagement plan. Or are there any other areas of the city or issues that are important to address? We're open to hearing those.
Does the planning commission have any comments or discussion on the housing action plan? I just want to clarify that when we say housing, we're talking rentals as well as ownership. Is that correct? Talking affordable housing.
That's correct.
I would just say I'm I'm happy this is happening and I I hope it can inform future policy as well as future housing.
And just so you know, I neglected to say this. We anticipate having this adopted late summer of next year and incorporating this into our comprehensive plan as part of the periodic update in 2024.
So it's a fairly lengthy process. I mean, there will be time.
Yes, certainly.
I know I have an immediate bias and that is whatever the housing action plan comes up with. I hope it does not create what I call planned slums or puts all of the low income housing in one area. I believe our city is diverse and our neighborhood should reflect that diversity. Any comments?
I think it'll be good to have that data and those findings. We could use more information. Often times we're flying at our best guess.
Correct. Is there anything else for the good of the planning commission?
I had just a couple of announcements for this evening. And the website Jim mentioned is live on our our DCD page now, it looks like. So that is available for your viewing. We have hired a consultant to help with the city's 2024 comprehensive plan update, or at least we've selected one and we are negotiating a contract. The the team that is doing the housing action plan is a sub consultant to the the firm that has been selected to help with the comprehensive plan. And so my hope is that the council will be approving a contract in early September for the comprehensive plan update. And we are we are bringing somebody on board who's going to help our department out because we're still quite busy with permitting volumes and other projects. And then the final announcement I wanted to make, I'm going to share my screen here if Josie will enable screen sharing. And we have we have a planner who we've hired, Jacob Miller, who joined the meeting. He was in the in the attendees list, so he didn't get a proper introduction. But he has taken our GIS and zoning maps and he has made an interactive zoning map that is now live on the city's website. So similar to the county map where you can go and actually click on parcels. We have, we have set this up so that you can go look up your zoning. And I'm going to pick on the city's property here, 640 Bay Street. When you click on an individual parcel in the city through this map, number one, there's a link to the parcel number, which will take you to the county's data. And so you can open a tab and view information from Kitsap County on taxes, lot size, et cetera. And then there's these little arrows at the top of the tab. But if you click on those, you'll see that it's downtown mixed use. And then that link will take you right to our zoning code. And so that's a huge improvement. We've been using PDF zoning maps for the nine years that I've been here. But thanks to our team's work, we now have online zoning maps. So that's exciting.
That is really cool. Nick, I have a question. Have we been, has KRCC adopted the housing and employment numbers so we know what our anticipated growth is?
They, so they discovered a discrepancy in the main bridge island number. It was off by like 30 where there was just a tabulation error and they are correcting that right now. So I think they're re adopting those so that everything can be finalized. But we have an agreement on what our our planning targets are. Jim, do you remember them off the top of your head? I think it's our population that we have to plan for during the 20 year period is 10,500 residents. And I believe the jobs was around 45. And I believe the jobs was around 4,500, if I remember correctly. So we're we're planning for 10,500 more residents between the year 2020 and 2044 and and 4,500 jobs for that period. And so we will as the consultant we've selected starts helping us with our comp plan, everything will be written with those numbers in mind to demonstrate that we are planning adequate parks, water, sewer, et cetera, and transportation improvements to accommodate that level of growth.
Thank you. Is there anything else for the good of the planning commission this evening? Hearing none, we stand adjourned.